Flag over here from the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone indivisible liberty and justice for all. I'd like to apologize to you folks. We had a meeting that began at 3:00 with all of the administrators in the district. And that began, as I said, at 3:00 and ran a little bit longer than we had anticipated. So I'm going to skip my comments. We'll move right on to... Oh, one thing I do have to mention. Lou and myself would like to leave to attend the concert at PMS if that's possible. So we may need to step out of here in about an hour. All right, item 5.0, approval and amendment minutes of November 28th, 2016. Is there a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Second by Lou. Motion by Steve. Any changes, any additions? If all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, those pass. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Just we have a motion moved overnight on a state trip that needs to be approved.
Okay. So that will add that to new business. 12.3. Out-of-state field trip. All right, public session. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on any topics that are on the agenda this evening? Shouldn't be a mic there. Is there a mic there or is it just a holder?
No.
There is. I've watched... I watched the last school board meeting and at the end they said we're going to talk about communication policy at this meeting, but I did not see it on the agenda. So I just want to speak to that for a minute. I think I either have to ask me folks. But I would support that. That's something I brought up about a year ago. And I brought with me a handout. It basically speaks to why it's so important for educators to have communication policy. It's written by a consultant. I think the National School Public Relations Association. So I was going to pass that out to you. And I also just wanted to say that, you know, in other districts, they have a lot of disservice. For example, Brunswick, every day you get an email as a parent. And anyone can go to the website and will get it. I'll forward you each an example. And I'll copy all that so you can see what parents receive there as far as communication. Also, Mr. Bingo mentioned an article that was in Time Magazine that really dealt with the teenagers. And the administration there sent that out to all our parents. So now that we're rating our students and their habits of communication and teachers are asked to give them a rating on a 1 to 4 scale as far as how they communicate, I think it's really a great time for us to show a lead by example and show in the district, you know, how we can have really high standard of communication. I also have an example from Cumberland of, you know, they have a group email. Every time they have a report, they send it out to class and this, class and that. All the parents get it. You know, we pull stuff proficiency-based and pull up the book too. We post it on the website. We have everyone speaking about this. There's really no reason why we can't just push more emails out to the parents. I'll pass these out to you. And I'll email you a couple more examples.
Okay, great. Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? All right. We'll move on to item 8.0. Presentation from literacy mentoring partnership. Turn this over to Patrick.
Yeah, we're fortunate to have Monica Black from Fisher Mitchell School, Mary Parker from a high school. And we have Joseph Smith is here. And I think our high school student couldn't be here tonight because of the situation. And so Monica, are you first?
I am.
Great, thank you.
So this is the second year that Mary Parker and I have coordinated a mentor-mentee program at Fisher Mitchell with academy students and Fisher Mitchell grade three students. Every Tuesday afternoon, our academy team walks to Fisher Mitchell and wholeheartedly build relationships with our students through literacy activities. Last year, the program was the Barbara Bush Foundation Teen Trend Setters Program. But this year, in mid-August, we were informed that the teen trend setter program could only be used to grade two. So this year's program is fully developed in-house. No outside funding or financial assistance at all through Barbara Bush grant. And that includes no side pen for those of us running it. Well, one could have thrown their hands up in the air and simply said, "Well, guess that's the end of that." No materials, no side pen, and truthfully, no space at Fisher Mitchell School to do the program since the once-used library is now used as both the library and the computer lab. But as you see, that's just not simply the way we run the roll. So the day we found out that we were being kicked out of the Barbara Bush grant, Mary and I got right to work figuring out how to not only make the collaboration work, but how to make it better. She showed up in my driveway on her pink scooter and off we went on a long walk to the ocean to a secret bench that I knew was. It was there that we flushed out the potential obstacles and devised solutions. It was clear, we were committed to making this happen as happens every single Tuesday at 1:15. So what's different? With Barbara Bush, we had a specific curriculum and pacing guides. Students all did the same lesson in readings. In this year's version, mentors and mentees choose a nonfiction article from their knowledge notebook. Topics include animals, inventions, and natural disasters. Lots of brief search support allowing students to have selective choices to increase motivation. Our program has the students write it each time, and that was not the case. They write fast learned and work together to come up with a really good fit that sounds like that. Most sessions allow for time for the grade three kids to share with their reading for self-selected reading and even read it and talk about it. This also was not the case with the Barbara Bush grant. We worked with an entire grade three classroom of students instead of picking and choosing based on low reading scores. This gives us an opportunity to put true literacy differentiation in place and give a whole classroom of kids a chance to have a special relationship with the team. Instead of just 10, it's the whole class. So one would ask, "How did I choose which grade three class?" Simple. The class that had the beginning of the school year had the most students' online literacy intervention Facebook. Jo Newkirk, the grade three teacher, has embraced this undertaking and has helped us expand the team's role even beyond working with our knowledge notebooks. Last week, our teams helped coach and critique the grade three kids' readers theater performances they were rehearsing for parents. Tomorrow, we'll continue our relationship building through a winter walk together, followed by hot cocoa and yes, reading. Winter poems will be introduced by the teams to their mentees and the mentees will have the poems in pamphlet form to take home and read to their family for vacation. Teams on Tuesdays will continue after the new year. A new session has been added to the knowledge notebook. Booktales, fables, realistic fiction. Ms. Newkirk met with Beverly Colak from Kennebec Estuary Land Trust last week to set up a Lorax Day at Thornhead in Med around Arbor Day. The plan at this point is to do a story walk based on a summary of the book by Dr. Seuss. Long before Going Green was mainstream, Dr. Seuss's Lorax spoke for the trees and warned of the dangers of disrespecting the environment. The teams will be assisting with the creation of the story walk and it will accompany the grade three students on the Arbor Day outing. It is with pride and pleasure that I introduce you to Joseph Smith, a grade three student who works with me every day for an extra dose of literacy and is one of our mentees. Come on up, Joseph. Ready? Here, how about you stand up here and I'll hold the mic.
Hi, my name is Joseph Smith. On the stage at 1:15 p.m., we meet in white with our team buddies. They are fun to hang out with and they help us with course we don't know. We also host them in our knowledge notebook. We get to choose what we believe has been. We write down facts about what we write and what makes... And we make up things. My favorite part is working with my team to make up a really good line that sounds true. I think it's... One of my favorite stories was about a panda. I like this one because I liked Charles Dickens' The Return of the Jew. These all reflect our... One, the country; two, the island where they are born. These, they even live right there. They have sisters.
Thank you. Mary, did you have anything or Joan that you wanted to add? Thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Okay, hang on, just one second.
Sure.
Any questions from the board? From Monica? Or for Joseph?
I may have said it, but do they work with the same team? Do you work with the same person each week? She gets to meet lots of different?
So that's a really interesting thing and a great question. So we ran into, there was a reason. That was one of our obstacles. We needed to figure out a creative way to get around. It's really hard when, for whatever reason, a team can't show up. It's also really hard for our kids to not have a team buddy. So it was, this kind of helped us on that in many ways. And then it's an entire classroom. So in this way, there is never a student, be it a teen or a third grader that shows up on a Tuesday that doesn't get to engage in this mentor-mentee relationship. It can be an issue. As you can see by last minute pull-out by our team this evening, things happen. So when there's a relationship though that's really quite special, we maintain it. And then you must have read my mind. I did bring one sample letter. Joan had her kids write these letters that the teens will get tomorrow. "Dear Michael, thank you for putting up with me. I enjoy you and I've listened to you read. I wish we could both be brothers and have a sleepover." And then he drew a picture that has your house and he's got you to be Michael in a bed and itself lying right next to his bed on like a sleeping bed on the floor. So it just kind of in really simple way shows how important that relationship building is. So in certain instances, it is very much that it's the same every single week. Others, it's a mix-and-match situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I just have one and you may have touched on this. So these are high school students. How are those high school students chosen? What grade level are they from? And how are they transported back and forth?
So I think, Mary, I'd love for you to do that. These are habits.
Yeah, my name is Mary Parker and I'm the academy teacher.
Mary, you can just... Just because we're on the television.
Gotcha.
So they need to hear you as well as us.
My name is Mary Parker and I'm the academy teacher at Morris High School. And the academy is the alternative ed program. So basically, the students are recommended to our guidance department, to me, and I interview them in the month of May for the next upcoming academic year. And they are all grades actually, grades 10, 11, and 12. I usually don't have freshmen, but I do have a multi-age group. And when they are interviewed, I don't know if they really know what they're getting into, but they kind of have to kind of take part in almost everything that we do because I'm the only person with no assistant. And so kind of like whenever the charge is, they have to hopefully charge along with me and that against me. So we do a reading program, of course, with Monica and then also with Joanne Powers at my corporate technical. So we're pretty active group and we do walk. It's a big part of the program as well as getting some fresh air and moving. So the only time we don't walk is if it's raining, a snowstorm, or maybe 23s or less. But otherwise, we walk everywhere as much as possible.
And so Mary does this at Dugnill and that is the Barbara Bush grant. And then ours is also a mentor-mentee program working with the afternoon academy students, but is our homegrown version.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation. Thank you, Joseph. On to committee reports. We have a few this evening. We'll begin with item 9.1, which is finance committee. And I will give the microphone to Steve.
Just quickly, the finance committee did meet earlier this month. Justin came there and did an extensive... Had done some research for us and gave us a very good report. I ask that material be provided to the full board, which I believe it has been. And that's about it. We're leaving again next... That's too well in the first week of the flu jam.
Any questions for Steve on finance? All right, item 9.2, facilities committee. Bill?
Facilities committee, that, I believe it was last week. We had, well, basically three issues, one of which Patrick will deal with later on, the building committee and how progress is occurring relative to the new Morris. Then two other issues that Dave Richards brought up with us. One is at the Woolwich Central School where there's a problem with tiles. And he is bringing together representatives of just about everybody that's ever touched a tile to try and ascertain what caused the problem and then solve it and hopefully get it paid for. So we won't know for a while until he's met with these folks and sorted through the issues. But it is an ongoing process and Jason, they're going to fix the floor.
Oh, I know.
The other issue was drinking water. And of course, that's been an issue statewide. The only school that is completely solid and has a clean bill of health at this point in time is Phippsburg because they work off of well, well water, and their well has been tested. All of the others are on the Bath municipal system. And the system has been tested and is terrific. But each of the schools now must submit a test kit, get it analyzed, and then sent back to make sure that all of the schools individually, internally, their water system is appropriate and has a clean bill of health. So that's ongoing. Dave's working on that now. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill? Bill, I've just got, this is a strange question and it never occurred to me and I should know this, but... So Woolwich Central School is on Bath Water District? I didn't, for some reason, I didn't realize that.
I didn't know that either.
Okay.
It goes up for a while.
I see.
And just a quick couple of updates is we will be testing all of our schools in the month, by the end of January, to be proactive. And every community got this letter and we're working with the different organizations here. So the state will be paying for the samples. So we should know by, I would think, the February board meeting, you know, what our results are for that.
I should add that there has been no cause for concern, but it is wise indeed to go forward with the testing and make sure that all of our facilities have solid water and has no foreign substances in it or anything like that. But it's not as a result of a problem or complaint that we're aware of.
And just an update on the Woolwich floor. A lot of people listening to this would think, you know, the school is four years old and shouldn't have this problem. But we did have a specialist come up and look. The floor in general is in very good shape and that it's basically some moisture that got onto the slab. So we're going to have to take up those pieces that are starting to come up and then re, you know, put an adhesive on there, a different adhesive. And so that will be done during February break. But the good news is we don't have to tear up the whole floor, just a section. The section actually where, you know, has most of the use. So there'll be a small cost to the district, but it's not anything that we thought it might have been. It's not going to be a huge project. So that's positive news.
All right, on to item 9.3, proficiency-based learning update. Judy?
So we're heavily involved, as you all know. Of course, the two main conversations that are happening right now are, what does it mean to actually meet the standard? We're trying to come to a common understanding, especially within departments with everybody from the same courses, with the same understanding of what it means to meet a particular standard. And also, a big discussion around trying to establish common expectations for retaking assessments because in a standards-based system, you really need to provide students with the opportunity to retake assessments until they meet the standard. But in the pilot year, what some teachers are finding is that if kids aren't ready to take the initial assessment, they will just say, you know, "I'll do the retake." So we really want to avoid that becoming common practice. And I think as time goes on and things sort of settle in, that that will. But it's a big conversation, especially on the leadership team about, you know, how do we address that? There's still a lot of work happening between middle-level and high-school level departments. So far, with our grade schools partnership coach, the English department, math, social studies, science, and foreign language, middle and high-school teachers have met together to prepare their work around standards so that, you know, the high school, the middle school was doing that so that we can make sure that kids are coming up to the high school with a certain set of knowledge and skills that are common. So that work will continue, but it's both, all the teachers that have been involved have really been very happy with those conversations, which is the first time in a long time that happened. And last but not least, I don't know if you remember when I showed you the video of, our PBL video of the high school teachers teaching. And Tim suggested that we do another video that talks about how taking a standard through the initiation of the standard and how that affects the students to not meet the standard. So we are actually doing that. Bob Jordan has really taken the lead on that. And Noah is actually going to be doing the artwork on that. So we hope to have that done, you know, in the not-too-distant future. So we're excited about that.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Any questions from the board?
Who's starring as the standard?
It's Hartunish, I think. Right, Noah?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think there's, like, one of the really big conversations is how does it work with, like, social studies and English, that kind of thing. So I know there's Miss Davy teaches East US history and then a bunch of other just regular US histories. It's going to be working with that, so it'll be that in a different perspective.
Okay, great. Our final committee report of this evening, item 9.4, Morris municipal building project update. Patrick, if you'd like to take the microphone?
Just, we had the Yellow Book appraisal. It's done on the West Bath portion of Winfar. So the board has that and we'll be discussing that tonight. We will have a Department of Transportation meeting with all parties involved soon that has to do with Two-Angle Road because it's a piece of property that we may be interested in purchasing. Last Thursday was the first time we had our design, sustainability, and building committee all meet back-to-back. So I think we were in meetings from 10 to 4 last week. Kind of the exciting piece of designing in my school and getting input. We've distributed the flyers to all over the different events to encourage people to get involved, to come to meetings, give us your input. And also, I think you received a schedule of site meetings. So basically, we're going to go to each community to a select board meeting or a city council meeting and Ron Lamar will be there and hopefully maybe one person from the board and myself to the meetings that I can make. But in Phippsburg, January 11th, Woolwich, the 17th of January. A rousing, I think, is going to have to be February 13th, which is a little bit later. And Bath City Hall will be February 1st. So again, we're just basically going over the site with them so that, because we're going to have a straw poll soon and we'd like to have people in the communities understand or answer any questions they may have about the site.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Any questions for Patrick? From the board? I just have one. I had a community member ask if it would be possible. I know that Ron had done a nice job of creating agendas for all of these meetings, those Thursday meetings. Could we get that, those agendas put on the website? Find them. I didn't look, I don't know if they're there.
Yeah, we can, I'll check with Ron in the morning, so.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, and if you want to take the microphone again, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Just read a quick email that Brandon Ward received this week. Just read just the beginning part of it. "On behalf of the Maine Environmental Education Association, it is my true pleasure to let you know that Bath Middle School has been named as the Maine Environmental Education Association's 2016 School of the Year. Congratulations to you and the staff at BMS for your commitment in engaging your students in the environment as you create authentic learning opportunities for them. Your partnership with organizations such as Chalky, Kennebec Estuary Land Trust, and the Ecology School are but a few examples of why Bath Middle School has been selected for this honor. So Brandon, myself, and a few staff members will be attending the recognition on January 25th. And if any board members are interested in attending it as well, we can certainly ask if that's possible." So again, BMS, Brandon mentioned to you earlier today that it's not just these connections with these organizations, but then our staff and their belief in expeditionary learning and a lot of action research that they've done out in the communities. So again, congratulations to BMS. Couple other things. December 9th, I attended Educate Maine conference. December 9th, I attended Educate Maine Conference. Very well-done day with businesses and school personnel getting together. Went to a couple of good sessions, but more importantly, was our Saginaw County Teacher of the Year, Lawrence Kovacs, was in attendance, as well as all the other County Teachers of the Year for recognition. So it was a very good day. Seventeen students from Woolwich, Fisher Mitchell, Phippsburg, and BMS have been invited to the State House, I think it's this Thursday, possibly Wednesday, to be recognized for their artwork chosen to be displayed in the State House. And First Lady Anna Page will be there to give certificates to our students. And just one last comment, I'm just always impressed with our schools and our staff, our students and staff and our communities. This time of year, there are families that are going through a tough time and to be able to give back to those families and make this a positive holiday for them. Again, just kudos to our students and staff for participating in that.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Item 10.2, Financial Report. Deb? Okay.
Okay, so tonight we're looking at November. At the end of November, we're about 30% expended, which is followed pretty much by trends for previous years. Our revenues are in at about 44%, which once again, pretty much follows previous years. There's one thing that you'll see on the revenue side on this report that you haven't seen in the past is state agency client revenues. And that revenue is coming in to support some state agency client students that were paying tuition. So it will be basically an offset of the tuition expense. Our audit is complete and the auditor will be at the January Finance Committee meeting to do his report. Budget work has started. January 20th, nonlabor budget to do hanging at this front of the school. And just.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Any questions? On to Old Business. We have one item, 11.1, Review of 2016, 2017 Board Goals. Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are trying to review these goals every board meeting and to kind of reflect upon what we've been doing to be able to address them on an ongoing basis. So one of our goals is to foster community-wide relationships. And I think that the meetings that Patrick just talked about, by going around to every town, talk about specifically what this new Morris school will mean to them, what's going on with it, being able to give them an individual respect. I think that helps meet goal number one. Patrick, and I think during every one of our meetings recently, make sure that we're talking about the ongoing Morris High School construction project. And we're going to be meeting later on, later on tonight, where to remind us of more information on the site visits, the scheduled site visits. I think that goal number three, in order to help the board's educational understanding, we heard a lot from school administrators this evening. And I think the things that we keep hearing from them is the importance of RTI, that we have been able to educate some of our current staff to help with the new STEAM initiative and that the ongoing proficiency-based education updates that we get from Judy are really important because it's a big picture and it's an ongoing process. I think that helps us really keep involved. So I think we're doing a good job of meeting our goals and I'm sure we'll have more to report on as the Morris project continues. And I think it's good to be reflective in each meeting to ask us, ask ourselves where we are with these, how can we?
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts from the board regarding the formation of the Communication Committee? Or Patrick, do you want to give any feedback on that? Is that something that we could have a discussion, maybe via email prior to the next? Does that seem beneficial? Yes? Okay.
If you want to ask them.
Yeah, let's get some input going and really try and address this. Jen?
Can we ask, can we ask Dean to participate in that? Because a lot of the lister of things like that, he's capable of doing. Before we go too far, I would just like to know what might be the best approaches for those.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. On to New Business. Item 12.1, Personnel Items. We have a couple of retirements and a resignation. Patrick?
Yeah, I just would like to thank the two people on air retirees, Mark Barry, vocational instructor, well-named, but also along the, justly our industrial arts teacher at Morris for 36 years in the district. Also, large shoes to fill because he also has done rapid education at Morris for the last 20-some years. So you see somebody different over at Winfar. Also, Darcy Emerson, grade six teacher at Woolwich, 20 years in the district, has decided to retire. So I wish them both well. And we have two resignations actually. One is Beth Harrington, visual education teacher at Woolwich at the end of this year. And then Dan Hemdill, who's a special ed teacher at Woolwich, has been offered a position at the Department of Education. And so we're happy for him, but we're also, you know, we'll work together, decide what his final date would be. But that will be before the end of this school year.
On to item 12.2, First Reading of Board Policies. And this is not an action item. We'll just go through these policies. I'll open it up to comments. The first policy, item 12.2A, Policy JIC, Transgender Students. This is guidelines. Any comments, questions from the board in this first reading?
I just have a question. The source of the guidelines. I don't know. The source, the source.
Some of this is coming from, but I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
I don't know.
Okay.
So this is a, this is our own policy, which is right here. Ten twenty, the staff and everybody, we have a partner for requirements, we say law. This is our attorney's proposing policy.
Yeah, and some of this is, you know, say, what they, a definition, you say, so you have to turn by a law, right? This is coming from, you know, the draft.
I mean, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see if there are any other district policies out there, that other districts would do, who have adopted, you know, the Christian policy, just to see what some of those.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the policy committed, that's what we did, been looking at this.
Our next policy is Policy JICE, Student Productions and Publications. Any comments, thoughts, questions on this policy? And finally, Policy JFAA, Admission of Resident Students. I just have a question on this policy. Is this a new policy for us?
It is. You know, VITA does research and talks with Maine school management, but also sometimes, actually, VITA and other administrative assistants go to conferences. And this is one that we just didn't, we didn't have. And it's, we often get questions from secretaries at our schools or from principals or from parents. And it's just something to kind of clarify, you know, what constitutes residency and walk someone through what they need to do. So we didn't have it before.
Question I have with this policy is, in reading it, there was some mention of superintendent's determination, but I wasn't clear, is there an instance within this policy that allows a superintendent to make an exception?
Well, we have the exception to what's called superintendent agreements, but that would be for, I mean, this is for admission of resident students. But if we had a student that lived in Wisconsin that was requesting to come here, that's where by, you know, we can have a superintendent's agreement between the two superintendents. It's good for one year and it really has to be about, it has to involve extending services.
So what I mean is, I'll give an example. Say there was a student that lived in this district, the family lived in this district for, you know, 10 years and they get transferred to a job in Oklahoma, but there's an aunt that lives in the district, the student lives with the aunt. The family isn't resident, the student is, how does that work?
Again, it's about timing. And if, your example right there is often what we'll do is we'll talk with the parents, we'll talk with the person that's going to take care of the student even if it's not family, and work with the court system and try to be as understanding as possible to get something official that gives them temporary guardianship, as an example, so that they can finish their CD year or finish that year so that they can go to the following school. So we're trying to be understanding, especially if it's halfway through a year. But we also have situations where a school year is about to start and someone says, well, we're going to build a hole in Bath, but right now we live in Toxen. And we can't, there's times that we can't accept because we've been, there's times when, sometimes it takes people for years to build a hole and then they're not a resident of RSU1, they're just coming to school here. Again, we don't provide transportation, that's on the parent, but at the same time, we have to try to be pretty, and also, we have sub-school choice in the district. So VITA does a very careful job of making sure that what town do they actually resident on, so to account.
But you feel this policy gives you that flexibility you need if you need to make a decision?
Yeah, I think it just clarifies, but at the same time, you know, every situation is a little different and we just need to be understanding of that, so.
Sure. Any other questions on that policy? Okay, item 12.3, we have one out-of-state field trip to approve. There's motion from Steve to approve, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. Public comment? All right. We now need to, item 14.0, we now need to go into executive session to discuss acquisition of property pursuant to Title 20-A, Section 405-6C. There are motion to go into executive session. Move by Bill, seconded by Steve. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we'll move to the comment room. And Steve, I'm going to ask if you could, if you carry on the meeting, I won't be coming back.